I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Are there any corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. At this time, we welcome residents to offer new public business. That is, if you'd like to talk about something that is not already on the agenda, you'd like to bring it to the selectmen's attention, we'd be happy to entertain your discussion points at this time. Is there anybody with new public business? Seeing none this evening. Thank you. Your, Davis Cares is on the agenda.
No, he's not Davis.
He's not Davis Cares.
Oh, did you have something new?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really busy on it.
Okay, but are you on the agenda tonight? Okay, would you like to speak to the, what's your business before the selectmen?
It's our fresh smoothies.
Yeah.
You're on the agenda.
You're on.
Just so people who aren't familiar, there are agendas outside the door to, for anybody who hasn't seen one before. So, at this time, we'll look at agenda item number three. The board will vote to accept gift in accordance to MGL Chapter forty-four, Chapter fifty-three A, Section fifty-three A. Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Chairman, this is a $2,000 gift from Walmart to support the town's fire prevention program.
Thank you. Any questions from the board members? Mr. Mills?
Nothing very nice. Thank you, Walmart.
Selectmen Langless?
Is this the first year or is this something they do every year?
I do not believe this is the first time they've supported the program.
Oh, great. We send them a thank you, Daddy.
Signing it as we speak.
Oh, thank you.
Selectmen Bennett?
No, no comments.
I have no comments other than the thanks for the, from the town, on behalf of the town. And I've just signed a letter of thanks if you so move this motion.
I move that we, I need to close it, it's not.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the gift as presented.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Agenda item done before. The board doesn't receive an application from Deep, Mary Beth Berry, event coordinator for a charity wine pouring license on Thursday, October twenty-fifth, 2018, from six to nine p.m. at Danvers Port, 161 Elliott Street. Would you, Mary Beth, would you like to speak to your application, please?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to come before you for the one-day charity liquor license. Mary Beth Berry, current president of Deep, the Danvers Education and Enrichment Partnership. This is for our twentieth annual Deep Wine and Food Tasting. This is the largest fundraiser that Deep does every year. Proceeds from this fundraiser go to support our teacher grant program. Every June, we award teachers in the Danvers Public Schools who have applied for a grant, we award them with their grant money. This past June, we awarded over $20,000 in grant to the teachers. So this year, it's our twentieth annual. It's going to be on Thursday, October twenty-fifth, from six p.m. to nine p.m. at the Danvers Port. Tickets are $40 each. There's local restaurants participating in it as well, some that include Texas Roadhouse, Kelly's Roast Beef, Daniella's Cafe, Barton's, Tony C's, Olive Garden, Edible Arrangements, Hometown Cafe. Merchant's Liquor Mart is our, one of our sponsors. And this year, Micho Misha Bishi is our presenting sponsor for the evening. Tickets can be purchased online and through our website at supportdeep.org. And just to give you an example of some of the grants that have been awarded, Google Expedition Virtual Reality goggles have been given to the high school and middle schools, oxygen sensors for the science classes at the high school, alternative seating for all grades. There was a grant for monitoring salt marsh erosion and social-emotional curriculum for the elementary schools. So those are just some of the grants that we have awarded. And over the years, hundreds of thousands of dollars have been awarded in grants to the teachers in the Danvers Public Schools, so.
Thank you. Selectmen Bennett, I know you're very active. Would you like to speak first?
No, I'm just glad to see that the wine tasting is continuing. It's in its twentieth year. That's terrific, and certainly does raise a lot of funds for the teacher grants, and we thank Deep for their continuing support of the teachers. Thank you.
Selectmen Mills?
Thank you, Mary Beth, for your, very, very important work on this.
Thank you.
Selectmen Langless?
I don't drink, I probably not, I can come down, I don't have to drink.
No, there's lots of food there. And in fact, I do want to thank the restaurants for participating because they do such a great job, and they also have been great supporters of the schools and all the sponsors that we have this year as well.
Selectmen Langless?
Yeah, I get to sit on the grant board to, and I'm always amazed at the work that the teachers do to apply for these grants. It's not just popularity. They have a lot of work to do, goes through superintendent, I believe, the principals of each school. I get a kick, and they can team up and they, so they can come in with something that's really going to benefit the school for a whole grade. So they, it is a lot of work, but I always laugh at, my favorite was still the bouncy balls in the elementary. I would love to be that teacher that sits there, but it helps to, you know, you don't think of these things, but it helps to relieve the children, and I just can't imagine watching a bunch of six-year-olds going up and down as you're trying to talk to them, but it does help. And we do get reported back to, and so I think it's great, the work that goes into it through the school, through Deep. I'd love to know what you've done, given for grants over 20 years. Maybe next year, you can add that up for us and let us know.
Yeah.
But think about it, $20,000 over 20 years. That's a lot of work.
It is.
So thank you for putting in the time for this event.
Thank you.
I have no questions, just wish you luck. I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I make a motion that we approve the application from Deep for their charity wine pouring license on Thursday, October twenty-fifth, from six to nine at Danvers Port for their twentieth wine tasting. Thank you.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to add to the grants, what Diane just spoke about was, I was just at open house for the high school, and in the Spanish class, they had alternative seating, which included the bouncy balls, big chairs, stools and all. And there was a child that came that night, and he was sitting in the bouncy ball, and he bounced the whole time, but it didn't affect the teacher who was presenting to the parents. And she also had thanked Deep, whether it was because I was there or not, but she made a mention that they were provided by Deep, so the teachers truly do appreciate this, so, just, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. The board doesn't receive an application from Fresh Smoothies, 100 Independence Way, Valerie Prasilian, manager for a common vehicles license at that location. Are you here to represent? If you'd go to the, to the podium, please, and speak to your application, we'd appreciate it. We film these on local cable access, so if you'll speak into the mic, that will be helpful. And would you introduce yourself, sir?
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Valerie Prasilian, and Fresh Smoothies is actually my first business that, you know, that I'm starting. The reason why I decided to, you know, start this business is because, you know, I'm very, I think, you know, being healthy, you know, having that option is very important to the community, and that's why I want to contribute. And at Liberty Tramall, you know, they don't really have any options for people who are self, you know, health-conscious about what they eat, so I want to help bring that in the mall. And now that they have a gym in there, and I also want, you know, to bring people to come over and have either a post or pre-workout, which is going to help you, because you don't want to go to the gym, and, you know, once you get out and you're not eating right, because, you know, it's not something that's going to help you achieve your goal if that's what you want to go for. So I just want to say that, you know, I'm originally from Haiti, and the reason why I decided to, you know, start my own business is because that, you know, I've always been passionate about that. I've always, you know, been, you know, wanted to basically just help people. So I don't know if you guys have any questions.
Welcome. Is that in the food court area of the Liberty Tramall?
No, it's not going to be in the food court. It's actually right across Scoop Ice Cream from the front entrance.
Great.
I didn't hear, across from what, please?
Scoop Ice Cream. It's.
Right near the front entrance.
Yeah, GNC.
Okay.
Right, right across from GNC.
Great.
Yeah.
Oh, that's Italian, too. All right, we have your applications in order. Selectmen Langless, do you have any questions?
No, welcome.
Thank you.
We're really thrilled you're going to open up in Danvers, and most of us up here are pretty healthy eaters, so.
Great.
You're going to have some really crazy, what's your favorite? Seaweed?
You're welcome many times, just come in. We have, we have good.
Is it like seaweed, or what's your favorite smoothie to make, the best?
I like the triple berries, which is strawberry, blueberry, and raspberry. It's very good.
That's good, because those are all low points on Weight Watchers, so we appreciate that.
Right, right, and also, you know, one other thing that was very important to me is, you know, allowing the customer to make their own choices in terms, you know, pick your own fruit. Would you like it with sugar or without sugar? So that was very important as well.
Good. Well, I hope you have luck teaming up with the gym. We certainly wish you great success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Selectmen Bennett?
What are your hours of operation?
From Monday through, I believe, Monday through Saturday, it's from ten to nine, and Sunday, it's eleven to six.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Selectmen Mills?
Welcome. Sounds wonderful. Good luck.
Thank you.
I have no other comments or questions. Good luck to you, sir.
I move that we accept as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, and to accept the application as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks.
It's passed. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
The board doesn't receive an application from Danvers Indoor Sports, 105 B Enduro Street, Mark Messis, manager, for a one-day wine and malt beverage license on Thursday, October eighteenth, from five to seven p.m. for a North Shore Chamber of Commerce meeting at that location. Mr. Messis, would you like to speak to your application?
Thank you. My name is Mark Messis from Danvers Center Sports, one of the, one of the partners there, co-owner. So this is a closed event to the North Shore Chamber of Commerce. This is the third time that we've held the event. It's an after-hours function where all the members, the business members of the North Shore Chamber of Commerce can gather and network and socialize for a couple hours. They're held typically a few times a year by the, by the chamber, and, you know, we're a member and we host the event. We've hosted it several times.
Thank you very much. Selectmen Mills?
Nothing except I always like to say that I go back with Mark's family long before he was born, and they're great people.
Thank you.
Selectmen Langless?
They are great people. I love the fact that you said that they were just going to gather and not exercise, because I know some of those guys, and they couldn't kick a ball, so.
No, they couldn't, although we are having, so one of our Discover Events coordinators is going to have activities there in case people want to challenge themselves.
Would you please film that and put it on DCAT for us? We don't get to laugh too much.
That might be.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Selectmen Bennett?
No, all set. Thank you. Good luck.
I'm all set as well. I'll entertain a motion on this application.
Move the application as presented, please.
Second. This is a motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven. The board will hear an update from Davis Cares and the Recreation Department representative. Did you want to up the ball, Mr.?
Why don't we, why don't we jump to Town Manager update and give these guys another shot at getting the technology up and running?
All right. All right. The Town Manager will report to the board on various.
It's fairly short, so I'll talk slowly.
Yeah, items of interest.
Just a couple of items. You are all invited next Monday, the tenth, I think Monday's the tenth. Our new finance director, Rodney Conley, is starting.
On Columbus Day?
On Wednesday, the tenth. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Re-acclimating from a conference and fighting a cold, so I'm feeling a bit addled tonight. But we're having a coffee for Rodney. He's starting on the tenth, which is a Wednesday at nine o'clock in this building upstairs. If anyone would like to attend, you'd be more than welcome to come and say hello to Rodney. As I mentioned in the email, Rodney's coming to us from the city of Lowell. He's, he started there in their performance measurement unit and was quickly promoted to their deputy chief financial officer and has been serving as their treasurer for the last year after unexpected departure from an incumbent. We're very excited to have him start. The timing works very well. He'll be coming toward the tail end of the audit, so he'll have a chance to participate in that process and certainly while in advance of the budget process. So, you know, we're eager to have him here. And so again, you'd all be welcome. Next Thursday, the eleventh, we're having the town open house. I distributed some flyers tonight for you to take a look at. That's a very well-attended event each year. We run a trolley for, around the different locations between the fire department, Danvers Electric, Town Hall, and the police department, as well as Endicott Park. And we'll be doing some raffles at Town Hall. One of the items folks will be able to bid on is a ride to school from the chief of police, which we know will be a very popular item. We're thinking about a trip up the aerial ladder truck down at the fire department, Town Manager for a day, although I've already notified everybody, I'm planning to take a personal day that day and rake my lawn, so they'll be able to join me at home and help me rake the leaves for that. So that's a nice event. Some of the things we're going to do this year, because we have a number of kind of high-profile projects either starting or underway, including kind of the kickoff to the rezoning effort for the downtown, an update on Smith School, and some of the planning department recreation projects. We'll have some booths set up at the, at the Town Hall for folks who want to come and learn a little bit about the status of those projects. And we are looking, related to Smith, we have our next building committee meeting next Friday, and we're looking at the last week in October as, as a week that we could potentially hold the first of the community forums on that project. So things are moving forward on that front. Looking ahead, on the, the meeting on the sixteenth, I'll be bringing the annual management compensation plan recommendations for the management team. We're a meeting or two behind on that due to the competent class study that is now being wrapped up, but we'll be ready at the next meeting to share those recommendations. I'm going to be inviting Public Works to our next meeting to provide an update to the board on the recent studies we've participated in with the DEP on our long-term water options in town. We just finished the second phase of a grant this summer that took a look at sensitivity analysis on both the watershed and, you know, what our local reservoirs could potentially do if they were to be increased in size. And there's some, some good recommendations came out of that, and we'll be ready the next meeting to talk about kind of the next step in that planning process and what that looks like. And also, circling back to an item we've tabled a few times at the next meeting, we anticipate having a recommendation for the fifth seat of the housing authority, which the, the board had tabled. Looking ahead to the meeting after that, I'd sent a note out to the board after the story in the Salem News this week related to a, a potential land swap with the Historical Society and their ongoing efforts to preserve the depot. The land swap issue goes back to the mid-1980s, and David DeLuca, the town council, Aaron Henry from Land News, as well as Susan Fletcher, one of our longtime planners, and I have been meeting recently to discuss bringing that before this board, because the, the short story is that when it was, when the land swap was initially approved by town meeting in 1986, the, the, finalizing that deal never happened, and with the creation of the Uniform Procurement Law, six years later, Chapter thirty-B, it would acquire additional town meetings. So we need to get the board up to speed on what that timeline looked like, what it, what it was, what the maps looked like, what the rationale was back then. And then I think we probably also need to discuss, based on the article that was in the news, what, if any, implications, this, this separate effort going on with respect to the depot, would or would not have in that regard. Also, I think at our, at that first November meeting, we'll probably be ready to take a look at, certainly we'll have our, our meeting schedule for next year to discuss and, as well as goals for the following year, so. I've run out of updates for you. I'm not sure where we are with our technology issue.
I can actually start and then.
Okay. One second. Were there any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
So, do you, can you set an expectation about when you'll come back to us regarding the citizen who brought up the issue about Hagway? When, when will you be ready to talk about that again? One of the next two meetings.
One of the next two meetings. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the Town Manager on the Town Manager's updates? No?
Nope.
All right. Then we will move back to agenda item number seven. The board will hear an update from Davis Cares and Recreation Department representative. Welcome.
Good evening. Nick Campion, Danvers Recreation.
Lyle Herod, interim director of Danvers Cares.
So hopefully, we'll be able to get this up and running soon. We've got a nice slideshow with some pictures. Worst-case scenario, we can still run through it, and we'll be able to email you all the presentation later this evening if we can't get it up. But long story short, Lyle and I have worked together, Danvers Cares and Danvers Rec. We've partnered for a few summers now. I think this summer, this past summer was our third. Lyle's been able to tap into some unique funding sources that allows us to partner and provide youth hands-on employment experiences. We had four students this past summer at our Falcon Summer Fund program. We, we hold that program at the Highland School, and it's one of our more popular ones. There's about 50 to 80 kids there, depending upon the week. And it's an opportunity for these children, or these youth, these excellent high school students, it's a great opportunity for them to facilitate games, run activities. They get great mentorship from our experienced staff at the program, and it's just very empowering for them to, to be in this position. It looks like we're pretty close to getting it up.
Do you want me to get going here?
Sure.
So the, this entire presentation is to sort of present an idea of the work that's being done between different town departments, like the Recreation Department and the Danvers Public Schools via Danvers Cares. And it's, this is an obvious and natural partnership with Danvers Recreation and Danvers Cares are both in the business of building a healthy Danvers. So over the past years, we forged that partnership based on the shared goal of spreading positive youth development opportunities for young people of all ages. So we'd just like to share a couple of our combined programming efforts for the past summer to celebrate their success and to encourage, encourage everyone in the community to join us in the search for new ways to make Danvers an even better place to raise That's the one. Just in the nick of time. So the first program we're going to talk about is the Falcon Fund Camp, the Summer Jobs Program that Nick was just telling you about. Like you said, that was our third year that we've done it. So we had seven overall youth with a grant of $9,240 from the North Shore Workforce Investment Board. The overall program funded seventeen jobs, oh, thank you, funded seventeen jobs across three work sites in Danvers. So the partners this year included Danvers Recreation, DCAT, and for the first time this year, we added the Danvers YMCA as a partner as well. The teens overall worked for six weeks for 20 hours a week, in addition to attending weekly career readiness workshops at the North Shore Youth Career Center in Salem with other youth from around the North Shore. These workshops covered topics such as effective communication, occupational goals, finding and applying to jobs, online presence and applications, acing the interview, and resume writing. Each team completed their own work-based learning plan for the summer. Their plans allowed them to tailor their experience to meet their interests and provide an opportunity for their teen and their supervisor to reflect on their experiences and evaluate their progress together. So if I just direct you to your handouts there, we have a brief one-pager that you can look over that summarizes the work-based learning plan, as well as a blank template for a work-based learning plan that each of the youth were asked to create. You'll see that there's a set of five different characteristics that apply to all jobs, such as attendance, workplace culture, just some of those basic job, you know, how to show up on time, where, you know, wear the proper clothing, all those things that seem like a given to adults, that's important to stress to young people as they go into their first work, work opportunities. And on the back of that work-based learning plan, you'll see that there's a bunch of blanks where they're able to fill in job-specific skills that they, that they're learning. They pick that off of a list that's provided by DESI, and they are, they're able to sort of hyper-focus on the skills that they want to be focused on, hopefully with an eye towards, you know, potential career opportunities, if not developing an area of interest. So it's great to see how they, there's, it's a two-prong review. The first review, well, so they, they fill in what skills they'd like to work on at the very beginning. Then there's the first review, three weeks through the program, where they sit down with me and their direct supervisor to go through the, and talk about how they feel like it's going, and we, there's time to solicit some feedback. And then at the end of the program, they complete, they do a final evaluation of themselves and the experience. So you get that 360 evaluation, not just of, you know, feedback from the supervisor to the youth, but also from the youth reflecting on their experience overall, back to the That is, that's a picture of, here, we'll talk about this next. The teens at Falcon Fund Camp, they were asked to design an activity by the end of the summer. Each one of them, they started off as assistant counselors, so they're not necessarily leading their own groups. They're usually following what tends to be a college student as the, who are, they're the leads. But throughout the summer, they practice their skills, they get ready, and then they work once a week with me and the supervisors, direct supervisors, to come up with healthy activity ideas. And throughout the summer, they work on, they actually draw up a lesson plan, just like you would have for a teacher in a classroom, where they, you know, design not only what the game is going to look like, but what materials they're going to need, what are some diff, how are they going to need to make modifications to the game as they arise? Like, for example, you might, you're not going to run the same, a dodgeball game is going to look a lot different for a group of second graders than it might for a group of fifth or sixth graders. So they're, they're tasked with modifying, creating modifications for each lesson. They also then end up practicing the activities together with each other as a way of sort of practicing, doing dry runs. And then they're also asked to inform all the staff the day before of what the activity is going to look like, the rest of the staff, so that the staff are able to support them so that it's not just them on their own. So this is a picture here of Sky Pierre, one of our wonderful, is her second year with the program, and she is explaining her game to one of the groups. So the youth are allowed to pick the topic that they want to educate the youth about. Again, we're not really going for in-depth, you know, it's not going to be a chemistry lesson for, for a first grader. It's more just about instilling healthy habits and having it come from somebody who's a young person like them as well. So the two main topics that come up are exercise and nutrition. So this is an example of a couple of campers working on their form for push-ups. So in that, in that game, that was a game where campers practiced a few of the exercises that they can do anywhere that also don't require any equipment. So no need to go to a gym. You can do it right in your living room. That's, I'm sure that's what everyone wants, right? A bunch of kids doing squats in the living room. This is a couple other pictures from the game. You'll see, again, you'll see a wide range of students in different ages, and I can really tell you, this has been such a successful program because of, I mean, really, just how great the kids are, number one, but also the level of buy-in that you have from the campers and from the staff, too, because it's really easy, if you're going to try and run a new activity, to, you know, to feed off of the energy of the people that are around you, and have such a positive supportive environment really does set the, set the youth up for success. So that was a major benefit. This is a fun one. This is part of a slip-and-slide relay race. Staff asked the campers, so before they got to do the slip-and-slide and do the other Staff asked the campers, so before they got to do the slip-and-slide and do the other components of this relay race, the staff, Hilda, she was the one who came up with this game, she asked them academic-based trivia questions as a means of stimulating thinking to prevent summer learning loss. So, the racers had to answer one of the questions right before they could proceed and do all the fun stuff on the course. And this is Sam, the staff, preventing his own summer learning loss. Nice job, Sam. Next, so this is, do you, do you want to say anything about this?
Sure. Yeah, so the Junior and Senior Rangers Program, we've been running for about four years now. And then, this past spring, we had the opportunity to send both Lyle and Erica Moretti from Endicott Park to the Appalachian Mountain Club's Youth
Opportunities Program.
Youth Opportunities Program, to get them certified as essentially
Outdoor leaders.
Outdoor leaders. You know, they're, they become certified in Leave No Trace Principles, hiking, backpacking, camping, the whole nine yards, everything you can do outdoors. It's a great program, and we were fortunate to have both Lyle and Erica attend and get certified. And so, with all the stuff that we learned through that training, we were able to collaborate with Lyle and implement that with our programming at Endicott Park over the summer. I think outside of, you know, Leave No Trace, you guys really also focused in on how to pitch a tent, knot tying, a whole bevy of lifelong skills that they can take with them. I'll let you talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's a, that's a pretty good summary right there. It was a very, very fun opportunity for me and for Erica, of course, because, you know, we were actually in the White Mountains for a bunch of days with other outdoor educators who work with youth. So, it was great to learn not only those, the training skills, but also I gleaned a lot from the other participants as well, just a really big wealth of knowledge there. I learned so much about lichens and all sorts of stuff. Can't wait to pass it on to the kids. But, yeah, like Nick was saying, you know, the focus really is on those lifelong skills that they're learning. So, you know, the Rangers, they did practice, they practiced knot tying. This is one of the group of Rangers showing off their bowline knots. And, yeah, I was incredibly surprised. I mean, the knots can be really, really difficult. They take, they took me a really long time, and it really does take a good amount of practice to really get them down. I was incredibly happy to see how well these young people took to it so quickly. And, you know, I think what was great about it was knot tying, if anyone who's ever tried to do it before, it's something that can be incredibly frustrating, because even if you're following the directions and you think you got it exactly right, sometimes when you pull it at the end, it just slips out, right? And I think that that is one of the important skills that they were learning is, even though they felt like they, you know, like they're doing it and they're pulling it, things didn't necessarily work out right every single time, but they took so quickly to the idea of, okay, this isn't something that I'm going to learn, I might not even get to it today or really get it today, but I'm going to keep trying. And that's what was great about this, is that we ran the same workshops. So, it was every Friday in that, in that summer course. So, there's a lot of overlap of the students. So, in the first week, all completely brand-new, right? By week two, there's some of the kids who were there last week who had a sort of inkling or were able to recall some of the skills and were able to help out their peers in that. By the third week, I and Erica were able to sort of step back, and especially for what we'll talk about next, is, you know, like the tent setup, things like that, they were able to, the kids were able to really lead that and be the teachers of that entire section, which was very impressive. I mean, the knots, the knots were something that, you know, we had to keep coming back to, and again, I still get it wrong a lot of times when I'm practicing those, but I was really impressed to see, you know, just the tenacity that the youth showed. Oh, I just want to make sure we get that part. Okay, one more, one more thing about this before I go forward. Here, I'll do it like this. So, in addition to those hard skills that they worked on, like Nick said, they also worked on Leave No Trace Principles. Leave No Trace, for those who aren't familiar, it's a set of outdoor ethics promoting conservation in the outdoors. It consists of seven principles. Plan ahead and prepare. Travel and camp on durable surfaces. Dispose of waste properly. Leave what you find. Minimize campfire impacts. Respect wildlife. And be considerate of other visitors. So, by teaching those Leave No Trace Principles, we do so much more than just teaching young people how to be respectful in nature. The Rangers were actually practicing the social-emotional learning competency of responsible decision-making. They were asked to consider ethical standards, safety concerns, social norms, and the consequences of their actions on themselves and others, all while engaging them in fun activities that increase their buy-in and retention.
One other really neat thing that I just want to mention, too, is that by sending Lyle and Erica to this training, it provided us with a lot of resources. We're now able to capitalize on any of the AMC's equipment, so we can use our canoes, kayaks, hiking poles, boots, socks, backpacks, the whole nine yards. So, it should be, going forward, a great resource for us to continue to benefit our programs and the children.
Oh, yeah. So, I was just going to show you a couple more pictures here. This is one of the Rangers assembling a tent. Obviously, a great chance to practice teamwork. People who set up a tent or tried to set up a tent by themselves know how difficult that is. And just basically, it's one of those things where if you don't work as a team, you're not going to get a tent that you can use. So, I mean, they just had a great, a great time with the tents. We left the tents up, usually set up for the rest of the day after they got, after they set them up. They took a great amount of pride and ownership after they had set up those tents. They wanted to use them, of course, right? Because it's something that they had created themselves. And so, they had a lot of fun doing things like telling ghost stories, a lot of sort of imagination sort of games. So, I was just happy to see them find so many additional uses that Erica and I hadn't foreseen. Oh, and so, like Nick had said, we are really trying to leverage the Youth Opportunities Program resources. Since we have access to all that equipment, and one of their department's goals, as well as ours, is to engage teenagers and high school students, Erica and I are working on an outdoor adventure club. And that's great, because it's allowing the Recreation Department and Endicott Park direct access to the students at the high school. So, they meet in the same place that the Danvers Cares Youth Leaders meet, in Room C-218. So, they recruited during the Activities Fair, they got about 30 sign-ups, and with the goal of having outdoor excursions a couple times in the fall, starting off small and moving towards some larger-scale trips eventually. But, the first excursion is going to be to Break Heart Reservation right in Saugus. There's a lot of fantastic wilderness, all within just a few minutes' ride of Danvers. So, that first trip is going to be on October 13th. It's open to all teenagers here in Danvers. The group's going to be hiking the Ridge Trail while discussing those foundational principles of Leave No Trace. Any questions?
Dr. Dana, you were kind enough to join us. Did you want to say anything?
It's really, their presentation is a great collaboration. Thank you.
Selectman Mills.
Nothing, amazing.
Selectman Angus.
Well, first off, I didn't mean to laugh when you were showing people putting up the tents, but I've been on some great camping trips, and one of the best things is sitting down and watching some people trying to put up a tent. It actually makes the most humor of the weekend.
Sure.
What is Leave No Trace Principles? Did you explain that? Did I miss?
Yeah, that's a set of outdoor ethical principles
Okay.
that we ask that, I mean, that essentially everyone should be following in the outdoors. It could be, you know, it's simple things like making sure that you, you know, pack out what you pack in, so making sure that you're leaving things, even something small like an apple core, you need to make sure that you're taking that out. Proper disposal of waste, if you need, if you need to go to the bathroom when you're out in the woods. The kids absolutely love that, if you can imagine. So, yeah, and then also, you know, proper fire safety and dispersion once you're done, what to do with, like, food scraps, how to make sure that you're not putting yourselves or any animals in a dangerous position by doing things like hanging bear bags. The list goes on and on, but it's a lot of really things that you might consider common-sense once you know them, but it does take a good amount of time out there and practicing those principles before they become second nature.
Well, I really like the direction you're going in, and I'm always one that believes in kids need to be outdoors. And I like that you're teaching them that although gyms are great, there's a lot now to do without needing equipment or money. There's also, you know, as you move forward on this, there's also the White Mountains and all those 3,000-foot mountains that I'm sure you're thinking if you can get some of them trained, those are great mountains to climb, they're beautiful, but it is good to do with a group, you know. I have done a couple of them, and, believe it or not, I made it all the way up and all the way down, and it's not an easy thing to do.
You can take on new leaders anytime if you want to join up.
Your pace and my pace are probably not the same, but, but maybe one of the, I might take one of those hikes, because I do love walking through, that's why I love the rail trail. I always walk through the high school woods. It's beautiful. We actually have smoothies here, maybe you can grab him on the way out. Let's get some of those smoothies for the kids. Maybe teach them a little nutrition, too. But, I do like the direction you're going in. I like that the Rec Department is joining in this. I, I think that we're doing more of that in the town, and I love seeing it, that we're combining departments, and I think it's more efficient. Oh, boy, we still have the sports center up. Maybe you could send the kids over there and get the North Shore Chamber moving, that would be good. But, I'm thrilled. It's a lot of work you've put into it, Lyle, in the short amount of time, and I thank you for doing this. I'm really thrilled with where you're sending these high school kids. Thank you.
Selectman Bennett.
How many, you call them youth, Mark Stroll calls them kiddos, how many kiddos take advantage of this program?
Of the outdoor
Yeah.
So, we haven't actually had our first meeting of it, it's going to be October 13th, so fingers crossed for a lot. But, I'd say we'd have to, we would obviously cap it a certain amount, just because it'll be Erica and I. So, I don't see us taking more than 15 to 20.
But, you did have 30 sign-ups that were interested
Yes.
in the program, so there's potential.
So, at our first October meeting for Danvers Cares, you talked about the collaboration over the summer, and I thought that was great, and I thought it was important that that get out to the community. Otherwise, nobody knows what you're doing. And I didn't think to wait till next June made any sense, why it just happened. So, you've done a lot this past summer, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure the kids will take advantage of it. So, when you take the kids out to Break Heart Reservation, are they allowed to bring their cell phones?
Yes. Of course, we'll ask them to put them away and everything. But, yeah, no, it's, I don't plan on taking away cell phones, but don't worry, they're going to be having so much fun, they will forget they exist.
Very good. Great. Thank you for coming tonight before us and making this presentation. I think it's great stuff that you're doing, and look forward to more in the future.
Thank you.
My fellow selectmen have asked all the questions I would ask. I want to thank you for joining us and look forward to a follow-up as to how successful the program is.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, we've had the town manager very excited and interested. I'll entertain the consent calendar, motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second on the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This time, we'll start with correspondence, selectmen new business, previous business, new public business updates, and selectmen's closing comments. Basically, free-for-all. Selectman Mills.
Nothing new. Thank you, Gadda.
Selectman Angus.
Nope, I've had a, nothing new this last two weeks.
All right. I have, Selectman Angus and I received some correspondence from a citizen, and we're following up appropriately with the town manager regarding public access to the waterways. More details to follow. Other than that, I have no updates. So, we will, as usual, end with Selectman Bennett. Do you have any new business and then your closing comments?
I do. Thank you.
Please.
First, I'd like, I asked the town clerk about early voting and absentee ballots. Perhaps he could let the public know the process going forward to the election day?
Mr. Clerk?
By all means, absentee ballots are currently available at the town clerk's office. And the schedule for early voting is being finalized and will be in final form by the end of this week. We're having a all-encompassing staff meeting on Thursday to map out logistics and planning for the election in November. But generally, the early voting can be expected to take place during the days of Monday, October 22nd, and Friday, November 2nd. As I say, we'll confirm those dates. Those dates are required to be advertised in the newspaper, newspapers, once they're finalized and we notify the Secretary of State's Office of those dates also. But, there'll be more to come as we get closer to the election day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, through the town manager, the planning department, you added some new folks. And from their titles, I couldn't tell what their job description really is. Could we get some kind of, in the future, some kind of
Well, I know Kelsey Bodie, the new Salem news reporter, has reached out and would like to do a feature on the reorganization of the division. We did ask that the last new member of the team who's slated to arrive Thursday be allowed to find his way to his desk before we write that article.
Let him get his hat off, huh?
But, we do, it's the same number of people. The main difference, we were able to take a, with the retirement of Kate Day and Karen Nelson, Aaron Henry came to us from Lexington as their planning director to step into a larger role overseeing land use and community services, which is the traditional departments and divisions within that service area, along with code and zoning, because that's really more of a economic development and planning-related function than public safety, which is where it had previously resided. From, at the staffing level, Susan Fletcher remains, she's the, she's been a longtime member of that division, supporting a number of our boards and committees, and in being involved with planning-related work. The staff planner position that had previously been filled by Georgia Wilson was upgraded to a principal planner position, which is the title that Kate Day used to hold. And we have a city planner from Salem has come in, Aaron Schaefer, to fill that role.
And what's his title?
She's a principal planner.
Principal planner.
And then, the final position, which is being filled this week, a gentleman named David Fields is coming in, and the job title, he's, he will hold as planning director, but his primary role will be split between planning duties and then also economic development duties, which is something that we put a priority on focusing and building into the reorg. So, same number of people, the main difference is that we've been able to carve out part of one of those positions to focus on economic development. And thanks to the retirement, we were able to elevate one of the, we have a senior staff planner now in Susan, and then we have a principal planner in Aaron. The main issue we're running into right now is that we have two Arons in the planning division, one with an E, one with two As, and so, we're working on nicknames for both of them, to make that clear. But, the, I think, hopefully with the next few weeks, that article will be out, and then more folks will be able to see the, it's a, it's a good team that's coming together, and they have a lot of work ahead of them with some of the rezoning efforts that we're trying to launch in a little, in a couple of months here, so.
Okay, thank you. And to the rezoning issue, Aaron Henry did make a presentation to the MMA Association, Selectment Association at the Yard Club sometime in the past, I can't remember what day it was, I can't remember what month it is sometimes. But, I attended, Jay Ash spoke, and he spoke about housing, and we talked about the rail trail. Aaron made the presentation on the overlay district that we did last year, and where we continue to move forwards downtown and on High Street. And the issue, question about water came up for the development. And I forget who it was, but they said they lived near a water source, and they're on Reservoir Drive. I said, no, it's Salem's water source. Oh, they were surprised to hear that, so. There was some discussion about how do we get more water? So, you mentioned that earlier tonight. So, that's out there in the different communities about the lack of water, how do you get water to cover the development you do, so.
And part of, I think part of the, part of the confusion related to water is that due to the restrictions that are put on our system, we can't actually use all of the permitted water that we have through our, through our quota and through the permit. We're registered, we are registered to use a certain number of gallons, and then on top of that, we are permitted to use a certain number of gallons per year. And based on the season and the triggers in the, in the regulations, we often can't reach the amount that we're allowed to use under the law. So, there's a question of, you know, it's a kind of an amalgamation of conservation, permit restrictions, and then supply. And as, I think, when we, when we hear from PPW in a couple of weeks, one of the big takeaways for us, and we talked about this earlier this year, it appears that there's more than enough water in the watershed to cover the needs of the current and future users. One of the issues we have is the timing of when that water is available. So, there's a surplus of water during the wet seasons, and then we don't have adequate storage within the, within the region to hang on to enough of it to use it during the dry season. So, that's a, that's an issue that we're wrestling with. One of the things we're looking at is reservoir capacity. We're also looking at, you know, MWRA remains a long-term option that the town will have to look at seriously at some point. But, it is, it is and remains a concern, but we've never had to say no to a, to a business or a, or a project because of a lack of water. But, at some point, it will become more of an issue.
Thank you. So, that's all my updates and correspondence. Mr. Chairman, if there's anything else on any other
Oh, you have the last one, sir.
Well, thank you. So, again, as we close tonight, please remember to thank the vets and current vets and previous vets that had served our country. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, Danvers. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night, Joe.